Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, May sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. Don Tranquer and Lynn Plagueo, myself, Mike Dennis are your county supervisors. Lisa Smith, Bjorn from IT and Lou Lann is our executive assistant. Um, back here and Mary is here from the Sentinel. And first on our agenda.
It's Todd.
Is Todd Keeney.
Any visitors?
Our Jackson County engineer. And please be patient, he's right back. I'm sorry. Oh, well, Joe Security, he's here too. We invited him today.
Local folks there.
Yeah, my notes for the meeting.
How was vacation?
I don't have vacation.
Oh, I thought of vacations.
Where was that last week?
Uh, national convention.
No, 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 that's a long time ago. I, uh. No, I went, uh. Washington County Engineer asked me to come to his board meeting and presented with the the National Rural County Engineer of the Year Award. So I went to his board meeting Tuesday. That's why I wasn't here, so. Not necessarily vacation. You assume since I'm not here, I'm on vacation, right? I got it in two thousand and fifteen. This kid is a kid. He's kind of like my. He's obviously not a kid, but he, uh. I don't know, I guess I would. He considered as mentor, maybe something like that, I don't know.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Well, good morning.
Thank you.
You need an agenda?
Uh, I have one, I just don't have it with me. No, what's the first name? The right away, uh.
You can use this one if you like.
Entrance permit? Yeah, okay, thank you. You're making the dot.
I didn't do anything to it, I just pointed out.
All right, appreciate it, thank you. So first thing is the discussion and possible action on the bridge materials awards. So we had our letting for, um, for lumber for the upcoming bridge projects. Um, got one bidder back Wheeler lumber. Who has supplied lumber on, you know, to a lot of counties in, in Jackson County included. Um, so we just got the one bid in. It is slightly over what we had estimated, so we took like last year's cost. And added five percent, which didn't quite cover it. Uh, but it's, you know, it's not too far out of line. It's a hundred and forty-seven thousand and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. We had estimated a hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty. Uh, you know, at this point, that, that's not too far in line and, you know, we need lumber and, and having this letting allows us to, anything that's let under contract like this, we can take out of the total project costs. If you recall, we're doing this so we can then award a quote for a contractor to do the work. And then this materials letting allows us to take the cost of materials and remove it from the the, uh, the threshold for requirement for bidding, because we had a bidding, a bid letting for this, so that's why we're doing it, so. Um, I just recommend that we award to Wheeler. I have the contract here, so.
And we've used them before.
Yep, they supplied lumber to us before.
And that is the only bid you received, is that correct?
There's really only two, uh, there's.
Is all four still?
Oh, does it? And Wheeler, excuse me, the, the, the catch, I guess, if you will, is they have to go get a bond. Bid security and a performance bond, so that adds cost. It costs money to go get an insurance company and get a bid bond and get a performance bond. So some companies like oh, may not want to do that, but they can go get one. But that's probably why too, our unit prices are a little more, because you're basically paying for a bond.
So.
I'll second that.
I have motion and second to approve the bidding award to Wither as presented for the bridge materials, lumber. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, the next one is for the, the steel materials for the bridge construction upcoming. Um, same process, you know, and I guess reasoning for doing that. We did get just the one bid in from O'Brien Steel. They use supply steel regularly for, to counties. Uh, this is for the steel age piling, um, for the piling itself for the abutments. We use a, a steel age pile for the caps on the piles and then it's bidding for beams for three different bridges. So this is basically all the steel for three bridges.
And we do send that material list on to more than, I mean.
Yeah, we just hope we have to advertise it. You advertise it under the, the, like a contractors, what do they call it, uh? Like master builders, uh, the websites that contractors go to, to, uh, look at projects that can build.
Or legal rich and them types, they don't see that.
This bid is a hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-three cents. And our estimate for this was, uh, two hundred and fifteen thousand and two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So this one is actually under our estimate, so. I think we had used our piling numbers and some DOT numbers for, for structural steel. It took like fifty percent of that, because structural steel for bidding includes providing material and then also incorporating into a project. So usually the cost of the steel, you double that to get the cost to install, that's your labor cost. So that's why it's fifty percent, but that's how we came up with the estimate for that, so. Now moving forward, we'll have a better idea of what it costs for structural steel, uh, for this letting if we do it again for next year, so.
Do you see steel prices maybe reducing a little bit also? Is that, is there?
Uh, piling prices have leveled off, I would say, between this year and the year before, it's definitely increased. I mean, what we're paying for HP ten by forty-twos is gone. Hundred bucks a piece, two hundred bucks a piece for piling. So move it.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bid from O'Brien Steel as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, opposed nay. Motion carries.
Okay. Next item is the, uh, uh, interest permit for, uh, John Stefani. This is a class D residential. Basically what it is, is he's gonna potentially build a shed in the future. He's asking for a driveway to go in the very south corner of his property. Um, the site distance was just under marginal, but since this is like a pretty low volume, it's old sixty-one and it's not posted speed, but the, the, the frequency at which somebody would drive by at fifty-five miles an hour is pretty minimal, so. We had originally looked at doing a hidden driveway sign, but it, we're at four hundred and fifty feet, you need five hundred, I think, for the low volume traffic in the lower speeds. I think we could just get by without, put up a sign.
Oh, I guess so. I, I, I know the area, I guess. So with that being said, do you think with the homes that are around there and the recreation, the park and such? Um, would it be advisable to put a speed limit there? I mean, you got the Ball Diamonds and you got several residents right along that stretch.
Yeah, the thing, you probably could, but I think what you'll find is that the, the speed of traffic there is already reduced because of you're cut, you're turning off of a two hundred and eighty-third street. If you're coming to the Ball Diamonds, you don't, what is it, fifteen hundred feet and you're turning in anyway?
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Basically right across from his house.
Yeah, so I don't know. My guess is the area is already dictating how fast people drive, you know?
Okay, well, you know better than I do. Yeah, I, I know there are several homes along that stretch and.
Yeah, and if, I think if, I just don't think it's a place where somebody could race through, you know what I mean? Uh, it's not really a shortcut anywhere, you know what I mean? So, I mean, if people petition for a speed limit, I think it definitely would be warranted, but at this point, I mean, unless, unless there's, like, there's an interest from the property owners, I wouldn't worry about it for now, so.
Okay. I have a motion and second to approve the entrance permit for John Stefani as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, uh, next item is a construction in right away permit. This is just a set in a new pole and then born under, uh, uh, Ninth Avenue, which is gravel to provide service for the nothing special about it, recommend approval.
I'll someone to approach that.
I have a motion and second to approve a right away utility permit for McCocon Valley, uh, as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay. So what I have now is gotta put this in the right order for you guys. Stacy was putting this. This is why I was a little late, because I was trying to get this put together. But then I made the error of printing this, um, single sided or double sided, but the signature page was single sided, so I couldn't do that, so she had to redo it. So there you go. So this, uh, is a secondary road assessment district report for three hundred and eighth street. So, um, we got the petition, then per the section of the code, the next step is to prepare this report, which I have done and submitted to you. The report has to identify, um, basically that the property owners that are going to be in the proposed district are listed, which they are. There's a, a flat map at the end and the appendices. Appendix, actually, there's one more. Um, shows the property owner, the section of the road for improvement. Um, talks about, in petition, they talked about, uh, uh, a fifty percent cog share with the county, so that's listed. And then also in the appendix, it's the cost estimates. We looked at two different options. One option is what's in the petition. That was the, uh, placement of a caton stone, eight inches, eight inches of a caton stone, four inches of choke stone. Um, a double chip seal and then waiting a year and coming back and paving it with three inches of asphalt. Um, the other option is to pave it with seven inches of PCC on the existing grade. I mean, after we do a little bit of grade trimming. So the reason we looked at a different option was there are sections of the road where the four slope doesn't meet the two to one requirements are, I guess, the design criteria. If we raise the road another fifteen inches, it just makes it even steeper. Uh, so placing seven inches of concrete, you know, reduces how much we'd raise the profile by, you know, cuts it in half over half. So that provides a little better transition to the shoulder to the four slope. Um, it is more expensive, but um, based on the fact that we're going to have to own and maintain this paving, pavement for forever now, once it's, once it's built, that plus the lifecycle cost of the concrete and the fact that it doesn't raise the profile elevation as much. I recommend that we do the PCC. That's what the cost breakdown is based on for property owners, twenty-one property owners. Um, they'd be responsible, each owner would be responsible to pay fourteen thousand dollars and two, fourteen, fourteen thousand, two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Um, so also in the appendix is the, like I said, the cost estimates and then the two different cross-sections or the two different options.
You're saying the, the, the macadam stone and then the three inches of blacktop will raise the road fifteen inches?
Fifteen inches.
And doing the cement will raise it about seven.
Well, if I'm reading this right, this, the, the concrete is much cheaper than the PCC.
No, you're not reading that right. Where are you looking at that? Where do you see that?
Estimate, engineer's estimate of cost.
On the, the very, in the appendix?
No.
In the writing.
Oh, in the writing? Where do you see that?
Oh, it says engineer's estimate of cost, first paragraph.
Yeah. Yeah, so approve the section of the road with, uh, it's two hundred and twenty-six thousand for HMA and two hundred and ninety-four thousand of PCC.
Yeah, there's about seventy thousand difference.
Right.
And the concrete being in the PCC.
So what do you?
Portland cement concrete, PCC.
It's two hundred and ninety-four thousand. And HMA hot mix asphalt is two hundred and twenty-six, so.
And, um, again, the cost share is still negotiable.
Yeah, so the next step is, and I was gonna talk about that, is now I presented this to you, you know, I'm saying I don't expect you to do anything other than review it for now, and then, um, I did get a request for this report. And I, I told the gentleman that I wouldn't send it out until I give it to the board, so I'll send a copy of it to, to Mary, basically. And then now you need to schedule a public hearing. Um, so that'd be the next step is, you know, we can probably next meeting, I'll have it on the board's agenda to pick a hearing date. The hearing has to be scheduled in accordance with Iowa Code three thirty-one, so that's, uh, uh, not less than four or no more than twenty days from the date of the hearing. So that's the, for this hearing, that's a publication requirement, so. And then the other thing is, we probably need to get with the auditor and treasurer and kind of figure out the code talks about how it gets paid for and issuing warrants and, um, they can, if it's over five hundred dollars assessment, which this would be, um, they can request that it be paid over ten equal installments over a ten-year period, so.
Is that, is that the estimate over ten years, the fourteen zero zero two?
That's what they have to pay total. If they're gonna pay, it's fourteen hundred dollars a year.
We don't know, I'm sorry. Equals what?
So if they're gonna do it over ten years, it'd be fourteen hundred dollars a year.
And that would be for the PCC.
So there's no interest on that or?
So that would, there would be interest if they choose to do that. So that's the, that's what they have to pay back, and then that's why the auditor, treasurer, they have to set. I don't know how you get, if you guys set an interest for warrants, if you ever issue warrants to be repaid by people. Do you do that every year or just when you need a project?
Maybe.
Okay. So there, there would be an interest amount that the board would have to set. You're gonna issue warrants to pay, pay the like secondary road back or whoever. They, you could do it out of the treasurer's office, he could issue payments to the contractor, or you could do it out of the secondary roads, from what I understand. And then the treasurer issues payments back. So that's all beyond my.
So it says twenty-one property owners and I'm counting twenty-four. Is there some doubles on there that?
Yes, there's a, there's a couple.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was allocated twice or if that's considered one.
There's fourteen is figured off of them.
There's twenty-one different property owners, some parcels. Some people own more than one parcel or they're, if you look at the map, you can see that it's, they're, they're double, it's one older, but it's double parcel.
But they.
Would they pay twice?
No, the, the, the way it's, the recommendation is that they're all gonna basically receive equal benefit that all twenty-one property owners that pay the same amount. It's not based on acreage or lot numbers or lot footage, it's based on twenty-one people divided that into the total cost.
So this gets sent out to the individual that was here, proposed it, and do we wait for input back?
I think that's what the hearing's for, so.
Okay, and do we decide what percentage if, if we agreed or, oh, I mean.
So at the hearing.
There's, there's a lot of decisions here that.
Yeah, so at the hearing, people show up and interested parties can, uh, you know, state their you know, approval or disapproval of it, if they have an issue with the assessment, all that stuff. That's done either to, at the hearing, or they can submit something in writing. Uh, but it has to be delivered by a certain time before the hearing. Uh, you can have a hearing, get a bunch of input, adjourn it and set another hearing, but just that final hearing, you guys have to take action where you change the assessment, like you say, um, you, they disapprove of it at fifty percent, um, or you can change, like, if you wanted a certain person to have a different assessment, you can do that. Uh, but you, when you do that, I believe you have to have a follow-up hearing, so, um, I'll just read you the link. On the final hearing, the board shall proceed to a determination of the matters raised in the proposal. The board may reject, approve, or modify and approve set of proposal. The board may exclude lands from the district or may add lands or otherwise modify the proposal. Uh, if the proposal is approved in whole or port, in part, in part, the board shall establish the history. The order of the board assembling, the district shall state the roads or roads to be improved, the type of the improvement and the lanes included in the district. The order shall be final and the lanes shall not be added or excluded from the district after the order is entered by the board. So you make, you have to make your final order, whether you approve or disapprove of it. Then after that, if you don't establish it, it's done, um, you, they could probably come back and petition for a different percentage. Uh, or if you prove it, then, um, uh, it just moves forward. We would have to go in and start designing and have our meetings.
I guess it just appears to me.
Three eleven.
I guess it appears to me like we're going in a reverse situation somehow. If we decide right now that we're not gonna approve fifty percent, we should have the first public hearing how we would like to see it. That's what I'm getting at, you know, instead of redoing it again.
If we change our percentage, does that, the petition was for fifty percent. If we decide we don't want to do that, does that make the petition and they have to redo?
I believe that's the process.
Okay. So either way, it's gonna have to do it again if, if we change the person.
Yes, you're gonna have to start the process again. If you, you have to take action on this petition at fifty percent. And then that's the way I understand.
I thought it was negotiable before that.
Um, you could probably talk about it at the hearing. So I think that's one of the options is, if you have this discussion at the hearing, and you, you basically say, hey, we don't think fifty percent is enough of a property owner contribution, then you could probably, uh, uh, what do you call that?
Change the?
No. Uh.
Checking about extending something?
No, where you just, you you, you stop the hearing. You, you don't, you have a postpone or you table it for another hearing. And then I think part of that discussion, you could say, well, let's come back with a revised report at a different percentage, and then you have another hearing on that report. And then you could probably approve or disapprove of that. That's a question I'd probably have to ask the county attorney, because that's getting into a legal question.
I guess that's what I'd like to know. If we could change the terms, if you want to be, the terms of whatever, um, in the first public hearing and make it this is what we approved. We, you know, just to throw it out there, we true, we approved sixty percent of input instead of fifty.
Well, I, I don't know. That's why I think it's a question for the attorney, because these people have signed the petition thinking you're paying fifty percent.
All right, that's what they were at. They, they just did that. There was no, we did not convey.
There was no.
There was no, no negotiation.
Yeah, that's just what they brought.
So their petition that they, they got their signature on is based on our fifty-fifty profit here. So I don't think we can arbitrarily change it, approve it, and then assume that they're gonna pay the whatever percentage that the board.
Either way, it has to have, if we change it, ask for another public hearing, or they come back with another petition at, at a different.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email or call the county attorney about that, because that, when I read the code, it's not real explicit on what happens if we have this kind of discussion about changing it to whatever, sixty, forty, seventy-five, twenty-five, or whatever it is.
No, they will get this and they can review it, discuss it in their, in their homeowner association or whatever they like to do and.
You might find that most of them just want to do the blacktop. They don't care about the elevation.
But it's, it's like, what's best for the county.
Yeah, I, that's again, that's why I'm recommending PCC. I think it'll end up being a safer section. It's gonna be a longer lasting section and, you know, fourteen hundred dollars a year and they don't ever have a desk controller and they don't pay for it.
Lisa, did you find out how long it would take to set up this special assessment district or?
I haven't done no research on it. I didn't know if this was a.
So, yeah, so right now, you guys review the report, um, I'll put it on the agenda for, uh, setting a hearing. Hopefully I'll have a response back from the county attorney. We'll have a little more uh, insight if you guys want to talk about, um, let's call it negotiating, but changing the, changing the pot share part, you know, maybe, you know, what you feel is acceptable, but um, the next step is to set a hearing. That's the next step. You've got report, per the code, the next step is to set a hearing and then hear solicit comment.
What's the potential of when this would happen this year? Uh, this calendar year or are you talking about the next calendar year?
Um, I can say it couldn't happen this calendar year, but it would be pretty tight, because we would have to have a letting, so we got to put, put pains and plans and specs. Go out, get a letting, hire a contractor, and depending on when that is, this could be work that's pretty late in the year. I mean, mind you, it's a small little job, so it's not like it's a you know, a big scope for a contractor to take on, but you know, it's just.
Those have the farmer's ground or there won't be no curb and gutter. This will just be kind of.
Yeah, this will just be PCC with two foot aggregate shoulder. And then what we looked at was we would close the road, do full wood paving for the PCC. For the asphalt will be single A paving. If we close the road, then we would send people out the other way until we reach maturity and then we would open up the road.
So that's level B the other way.
Yeah, so we, we, we've rocked it in the past, so they would have to get in and out that way for probably four or five days.
Okay.
Um, and okay, we do, if we did this, we do the special assessment district, um, is that like a bond where we get that money in and then we would pay it back over the ten years or do we self-finance that and get reimbursed over ten years?
I believe it's a, where we self-finance it, then we get reimbursed. And then the way it works is if they are not making payments, then you assign it, you assess it against their taxes, like you, it's like a tax assessment at that point.
Okay.
If they don't pay it. Now, if they pay it like they're supposed to, it's no big deal, but.
And you got, does, so let's say they go with PCC two ninety-four, two ninety-five thou, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. We self-fin, you got that efficient in your budget or what has to give if this goes through?
So no, i- if you get to prove this, it's in the report, but we would have to do a five-year program amendment and budget amendment to do this.
Okay.
So it's not a big deal. We just, we would have to do a budget amendment and a program amendment to add this to the program and add the money in to do the job.
Okay, would that bump another road off the five-year road plan or push it back a little bit?
No, it, well, so if we're gonna pay whatever percentage of the cost is, uh, whatever, say it's, say it's roughly three hundred thousand dollars and we gotta pay a hundred and fifty thousand. I don't think that's gonna bump another project. We would have to just take that out of our carryover balance, do the hundred and fifty thousand, and then the other amount should be a pass-through. We should be getting that back.
Over ten years, but they're gonna want paid upfront, so we're gonna have, to me, it seems like we would have to eat the three hundred thousand. And we would be reimbursed over ten years.
So this is again, getting out of my realm here a little bit, but what I would hope would be that they would issue warrants, right, for the total project. And then as we construct it, the treasurer pays us back. So the, the, the treasurer's office basically is holding the funds, basically is absorbing the debt until it gets paid back over ten years, yeah.
The bank.
Yes, the bank, basically. That's like for, when we do, it's like, say, grain district work in Clinton County, that's how they do it. They issue warrants. The, the county pays for it. Yeah, the county pays for the project. And then the, the, the landowners pay back, you know, periodically, and they pay the treasurer's office back plus the interest. And that's what you need to set an interest amount that you're gonna have for the year.
Yeah, we'll review this and as long as they get, uh, the information that you have here and they can review it, then we can have further conversation.
They can't really dictate, but if we say we want the PCC, they can't really dictate and say, no, we only want that.
Yeah, they can't, they can't, uh, they petition for the type of improvement, which is pavement, right? So they could have said grading for paving or something like that, but yeah, so they petitioned for the type of improvement, which is creating a paved surface, and that's what we've evaluated. There's a lot of different ways to pave the road. We could pave it with, you know, nine inches of asphalt on grade two, uh, that's another option, but you, you know, so it's how we pave it is kind of up to us, but they're petitioning for it to get paid, basically, so. All right, that's all I have.
So I do have a question, maybe because you weren't here last week and we awarded you like two million dollars. So there's a couple of questions involved in that a- as far as the total cost of the project, and what does that do to our five-year plan and how does that all work?
So, and I, that bridge, um, is currently not on the program. So we applied for that funding, um, and if we got the money, we were gonna add it to the program. So we have three years from the date that we signed the funding agreement to get obligated, which is basically to get it let, three years. Um, we don't have the funding agreement yet, that'll probably. We don't have the funding agreement yet. That'll probably be another two, three months before we get that. So the plan was. Um, get the money, because without the money, we couldn't, we don't have enough money without this. This grant money that we got, we wouldn't be able to do the project and have it on the five-year program. So now, uh, for instance, like say. If I do a budget amendment, like our five-year program amendment, say for the secondary roads assessment district, we'll just throw this in there with. We won't have to amend the budget. We'll just put this project on it.
But if we amend the program, we're talking about maybe again pushing something else back?
No, we would add this in.
But it sounds like a large amount adding in.
That's right, yeah.
I, I like, I like the award though. I appreciate you working on that and submitting that and uh.
I like getting free money.
Make, making it available to us.
Does a more head bridges, bridges still go everything?
Yeah, so this will just, like I said, it'll just be a project that gets added into our program. At some point, we may be uh. In a little bit of a bind if they all, well. But we're not gonna have them all potentially hopefully let constructed at the same time, because we wouldn't have enough. Or bodies to inspect it all. Without maybe getting help from surrounding counties. And we've done that before, like I've asked Scott County to come help us and we've helped Scott County. We could do Clinton County, you know, if we needed inspector for a couple of weeks to bridge a gap, we could do that. But ideally you wouldn't have, you know, two big bridges and a paving project trying to go on at the same time, because you. We don't have enough staff, we just don't. That I don't want to hire a consultant, so I just borrow other county staff until, get us by till we can cover with our own staff, so.
Okay, any other questions for Todd?
Thank you much. All right, thanks.
All right, so next on our agenda, is there any visitors? Or citizens that like to, would like to address the board this morning? Uh, hearing saying none. We'll move on to Lisa, our county auditor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning I made a motion to approve the minutes of the May ninth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings as written by Honorable Senator Smith. And author of work publication in official newspapers.
There, there's a number in there that didn't look quite right. We might have to approve it, amend the number. You got the minutes with this? There was a over two million dollar number in there or something, I think there's maybe just a typo or something.
Is that the award for the?
Vote each one for second flag to accept the two million dollar reward from the Iowa Department of Transportation.
No. Other down, um. As far as. In the um, claims, there was a number in there that. It wasn't even a comma. Gotta be more specific one.
So you approved the, our claims were five hundred and five thousand last week.
Was there some claims below that?
And then we talked about all of the claims that were approved for.
In that section, there's a.
Jackson County.
Oh. So it's the, it's the, it's the typing of the uh, money to advance precast. That just needs to be corrected. Yeah, so it's just that I will correct that.
Just that number.
That's it, that's the type, I will correct that.
The motion is.
I'll make the motion with the correction made by.
It's a title in the, to be paid for the LAC. It's specifically to. It's for the total clock. Nope, excuse me. It's on for the, it was not for the LAC. It was for the Together We Build project to advance precast.
The motion is second through the minutes was demanded as presented, although in favor, say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to accept place on file, the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the April fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting. I'll second that.
Motion is second to approve the uh, Veterans Affairs Commission meeting. Meeting minutes as presented, all those in favor, say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve a Class C retail alcohol license without door service to Bellevue Horsemen's Club, Inc. At twenty-five, one twenty-one, two hundred and ninety-seventh Avenue Bellevue. Effective June first, twenty twenty-three through February first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the Class C retail alcohol liquor license to Bellevue Horseman's Club as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Right, I oppose nay. Motion carried.
They asked for an eight one.
Great load in winter probably.
Pretty winter.
Old facility, yes. Thank you. Luanne? And Luanne, our executive assistant. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, um, calendar for this week. We already taken here a couple pieces of business for today already. One o'clock this afternoon is an early childhood Iowa stakeholders alliance meeting by Zoom for NIN. At five o'clock is um, Jackson County Conservation Board meeting, and I think they start at the Oakland Mill. And then move over to Prairie Creek. And that's for any of you that wanted to attend that. At six o'clock is Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting for Don. And I believe that's either at the library or by Zoom. And at seven o'clock tonight is Jackson County Board of Health meeting for NIN. Wednesday, May seventeenth at five PM is an ECIA council meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Mike. Thursday, May eighteenth at nine AM. Is tentatively the Housing Trust Fund meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for NIN. They may change that if they can't get a quorum for the twenty-fifth, but I don't know if she has a quorum yet. I haven't heard. Um, six o'clock on Thursday is Limestone Bluffs RCND by Zoom for Don. Friday, May nineteenth at nine AM is the PEI and ECIA legislative breakfast at the McCoca Art Experience. For any of you that wanted to attend that. At ten AM that morning is seven judicial department of corrections meeting in Davenport for NIN. Monday, May twenty-second at one PM is Waste Authority of Jackson County meeting for Mike. At four PM is the early childhood Iowa council meeting in Doitt for NIN. Six PM that night is the Jackson County Board of Adjustment meeting for any of you. And at seven PM that night is Together We Build meeting. We didn't usually goes to this. The next regular meeting will be Tuesday, May twenty-third at nine AM. The only business I have today is talking about fireworks permits which had been tabled. And I talked to um, county attorney. Um, John Keys, and he said that if we want to untable that, which Mike had asked me about. Then uh, we simply have to make a, a motion, take action on a motion to untable. The tabling of the fireworks permit that was done on April eighteenth.
So I guess we had good discussion. We had a uh, work session with several um, representatives. And I think it was all a discussion and I think we need further input, but um. I think I would like to act one way or another on the permit that's on the table. So that other permits come in a timely manner that we can act on them. I don't know if we're gonna get anything changed for this year. We're not really.
I would motion to untable the Tower of Tharp uh, fireworks permit.
I have a motion second to re-table the uh, fireworks permit. From the torch as presented, all of the favors say aye. I oppose nay, will be carried.
I would motion to approve fireworks permit for Tower of Tharp.
I will second that.
I have a motion and second to approve the fireworks permitted presented from Tower of Tharp. All those in favor, say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
Thank you, and that is all the business I have for you.
Just, I was looking last week, if I remember right, we didn't get our update from the, the jail. And I'm here this week, we'll get them back next week. We're supposed to do, kind of a couple of weeks, just stop it a little.
Okay, so um. I guess, does anybody have any reports as far as uh, other commissions or board that we have? I did have a D cap meeting. Friday. And um, we talked about, of course, the blizzard has been reduced significantly because uh. The reach-out program has been taken over by. Um, the mental health of Iowa, so. I mean, there's, other than that, the programs are all going really well. Also working well. And uh. One of our. Long-terming has retired, so we replaced him with a new. Board member. Uh, Clinton County talked a little bit about their juvenile detention and mental health budget. They budgeted thirty thousand last year for that. And they're well over two hundred thousand in. Invoices for that. So um, it's, it's an issue that's coming or has been on the horizon and. I have so juvenile detention and mental health, so that's still in. In the works of how we're gonna fund it or what our budget may be too, I suppose may come to. At some point, they did do like forty-one hundred screenings in the McCoca to Clinton and Bellevue schools. For this type of thing and you know, they do come up with. Um, people that, individuals that uh, need some personal help. But again, it's, it's a matter of. Funding it and adopting a program and be able to sustain it. So it's, it's all work in progress. And I will touch base a little bit with Lynn and. Jack when they come in to record on there.
Cook and Waters, well, Cook and River Water Management Authority, uh, we met, um, there was some uh. They were awarded a grant to kind of get signs that designate the watershed. Um, they're gonna be placed on bridges, things like that to kind of let know. People know when they come into our watershed, so um, that was uh, exciting to get in. Um, there was some talk about financing and, and uh. We have our uh, fiscal. Agent, which is behind Stone Bluff RCND. They're in charge of managing our money, talking about possibly taking advantage of some of the rates of city bonds and money market accounts. And we're checking into that, so that's all we're gonna do. Workforce development, they had the full board meeting yesterday. Talked about some success stories. We talked about some budgeting. The big exciting news is they were selected for the Job Quality Academy. Um, that came out from the Department of Labor in Washington DC. Like at the United States, they were gonna select like sixteen districts throughout the United States. Um, to be part of this Job Quality Academy, which is kind of a generic term. They're trying to decide. Being six, the, the selected individuals for which the Mississippi Valley uh. District that we're in, one, one of the sixteen selected, they get to go to Washington DC on the uh, twenty-seventh and thirtieth of June. To kind of more define what this is gonna be and what we're, what, what we're looking for. They kind of, the ones selected, they, the, the feds liked what was going on, but. They're trying to figure out exactly what this academy can be, so it was one of those, let's apply. See if we get accepted and those that are accepted can kind of help define the program. So we're kind of interested to see where that goes.
Grantwood scenic byway, um, the sole two portion that. The state is putting out, um, Jackson County was selected to be um. Part of that advertisement of that. Um, director, Jerome, is to visit um, some businesses. Here in Jackson County, two of them that we know are for sure. They're trying to get it to be a longer visit, but um, that. Innovated one twenty and Blue Nine. Um, are two businesses that they are. That will be visited for sure. The Welcome Center that is down in Sebula in the faith shop. Where they moved it to.
They moved.
The heart, yeah. That is also going to be a state welcome center, not just a Jackson County. So it got selected for that. So there'll be. More stuff there. The scenic. Some funding for the state for the Grantwood scenic byway. They got approved. You'll be seeing some signs, hard to see obviously, but. Similar to these in different areas along the Grantwood scenic byway. And they will also be like, I think up around Bellevue, which will. Come off of um, a different funding, but and it talks about the areas and stuff like that, so. Um, PBS is also doing twenty episodes starting the spring of twenty twenty-four. And um. Different byways throughout the state and they will be doing some on our byway also. Be on the PBS.
All positive stuff as far as tourism and improvements to our county anyway. And with that being said, we are joined by uh, lawyer Rolly and Ruth. Thank you. It wasn't spelled, it wasn't spelled out in front of me, so I did destroy it anyway. From, uh, from zoning department. Good morning, ladies.
Hi, so we're just here for now for the update and then we have the, the ordinance that we'll get to at ten o'clock, because you want to stay on schedule with that, right?
True.
Okay, so some of the updates, um, we started sending out notices to Leach Lake. They were started to be observed on May first. And um, there was forty-two separate notices delivered to thirty-three property owners. That was in the first group. We, there will be multiple groups, probably at least three, maybe four, depends on how we're able to break them. We are not ready to send out the second group yet. There's just a lot, a lot of moving pieces and so we're, we're hoping to have that second group sent out for June first. That's our tentative date for that. It's not ideal. It's not what we initially would have anticipated, but it's what's gonna have to work. Um, and John Key is our county attorney. I also had concerns about sending out too many. At one time and too close together, because he doesn't want to overwhelm our magistrate court. With, with court cases. He says the maximum he's gonna be able to do a week on these would be two. So he's, we're just trying to gauge things um, that way too. I sent you guys an email last night that came in regarding somebody that wants um. Two things, basically. He wants an extension cleaning up. And then also he has um. There's a disagreement whether what is a nuisance. I know we have some pictures. I wanted to show this property in particular. And so I wanted to show that, just to show you what some of the things we're looking at. We're not seeing the camper. Now, you can see a little bit of it. Okay, that's, that's a camper. He says it's a storage shed. It has flat tires, is un, um, is unregistered. It's, it, it isn't what you and I would call a storage shed necessarily, where we have our lawnmower shovels. It has stuff just. Cramped in it, um, building materials, supplies. He's kind of the go-to person for, if someone needs something fixed, he tends to have parts. The one thing I wanted. You can see there's stuff all around it, and he is working on cleaning it up. The wood piles are gonna stay, that is his firewood, but they are cutting it into wood piles. I want to think that, I was might have been gone last time we were up there, I don't know if I saw that. Um but there has been a little bit of movement on that property. So um I want to show another picture that's gonna have. It's once we haven't set notices on, but I just wanna kind of show you some of the things I anticipate being problems. If um that is not considered a nuisance. Um. Anyway, there are plenty of um. In, I don't know how how far you venture out in Leisure Lake, Don, when you're out there, but there's a property on West Circle Drive that. Has like five junk campers. Five junk campers um trailers that are now loaded with junk. And they're unregistered, you know, with their unregistered vehicles, so I just would um. If you guys want to take a road trip and kind of look at. If, you know, we're gonna open Pandora's box by not calling that camper. A nuisance, um because I can. I can anticipate that happening, they're already trying. To get away with things and other people, we're getting phone calls, well, so and so, so they don't have to do that, it's like, oh, yes, they do. Well, you told them, no, I didn't, so we're already starting to. See how the games are gonna be played. Um that people that want to just cover step up with a tarp. No, let's not just be covering stuff up with a tarp, and. Then someone else is like, well, I just want to cover that stuff up with tarts, no, that's not getting rid of the nuisance. So um but this is the first official one that we've had with Mister um. Um Marshall that wanted you guys' consideration. Thank you.
So uh when is, are we making a decision on the extension, is that today or is that?
Know that we can do that, I wanted to bring it to your attention today.
I read it and I I I guess I would like to do. Take a road trip or view some of the properties and.
Yeah, and I'd be more than happy to do that with you. And I can send those pictures directly to your email through that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Because, because I just want you guys to kind of see if we, if this was allowed to stay. What some of the other things are gonna probably end up being requested to stay, because they're gonna be storied too, I would assume. And that is kind of a broad um. Broad term. For junk that's been sitting around and other junk from inside of it for years and years. And by the way, we have gotten several phone calls, we've received emails from property owners in Leisure Lake thanking. All of us for doing our job. So there are people out there that are seeing results already. Um there's some people that got their properties cleaned up and we were able not to have to serve a notice. Um, shoot, I'm sorry, I had a lady at my desk when I left and some of my stuff got left on my desk. I had a list of all the properties that were so far sent. Uh an abatement notice or served an abatement notice by the sheriff's office, um. We had, like I said, forty two individual notices go out, thirty three different property owners. And we had to use Jackson County, Dubuque County, Clinton County, Lynn County. Hardin County and Grant County to serve our papers.
So.
Because of the, where the property owners.
What I'm seeing right here is, this is a private drive, is that correct to get there?
Is that the one on West Circle? Is that where you are? So this is not where the the man is asking for the request. Um this is another, another property that I would anticipate if that one is granted. That these other people will be asking for similar.
So the road, I can see where the roads at, they're going down below there, yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
Actual road, and that's a lane going back there, so I'd be very leery about driving back in that lane.
Oh, we we were out there a few weeks ago.
Good for you, I'm just said, I'm a very little leery about driving back in there.
Oh, it's not bad.
Yeah, not enough quality of the road, is it a private drive or is it an actual public road?
It's it's, I have permission to be in Leisure Lake, so it is a Leisure Lake dr- uh Leisure Lake Road.
Does the Leisure Lake Property Owners Association maintain that road that you drove back to see his property?
Yes, sir.
The.
That is West Circle Drive, we have not trespassed at all, and I. We have not trespassed, and then that's one, another thing without trespassing, we have had people. Um say that their vehicles are not abandoned.
Okay, that's good right there, so you're telling me that this circle down below, the driveway, uh the road, I want to call it. Down below where all the cars are parked down below there, this is Circle Drive, the main road, and that's a.
This is Circle, this is Circle, this is one we're talking about.
Going, keep going with your finger, right there, that's a private lane that goes, keep going, up around the corner, up around.
Oh, West Circle Drive, this I believe is. That has a name on it, I'm not sure, we have not driven.
So that's the property we just had up back, way back in there.
That wasn't the one that we needed though, just. And I don't have property lines or names on it, so we did not drive up that lane, we're not there. That is not the guy that's looking for the appeal, that's just what I'm trying to point out, that if um that one is granted. There's gonna be others like this, they're gonna be asking for the same type of exception.
I want to know what the legal definition of a storage container versus a camper is, because yeah, it's a camper, but. Uh if you, this is one of these things where it's gonna end up in court, can you store things in a camper? And does that make it a storage container?
Right.
You know, because I don't think we're in a position where we could say that's a camper.
And a railroad car.
Yeah. Right, or an old semi. You know, an old semi trailer, you can buy a box trailer up in Dubuque and bring it out, and it becomes a storage unit.
Right.
But most of those have wheels taken off and set on the ground. I I don't know what the definition is, if it's still got wheels on it and all that stuff, then it's a truck, is it a trailer?
Right.
You know, that would be a question to ask, because it could get to semantics to that point where.
Right. And our ordinance is, would would have some weight, but. Talking to county attorneys, maybe. Our ordinance needs to be. Enhanced in upcoming years or whenever.
Well, it's hard to do after the fact when you're trying to use.
True, but we're working with what we have to work with.
Well, great.
But no, we can ask for um definition from um. From the county attorney, what where junk stops and starts and where it's still a camper that's full of junk.
Well, it's nice to hear that we are getting some compliance from from others that they are, and they can clean something up. Obviously, some of it needs to be cleaned up, and if they're doing business out of some of these properties, that's another issue.
Yes, and that is an issue out there.
So, I mean, we need to address what we can, and we will. Um follow up with what we can and what our legal liabilities or limits are. So appreciate the update there.
And I'll just have Ruth give you the list so far of of. The abatement notices that have been served in um our county uh this year. And the this, the first.
You have not highlighted any of these that are making improvements?
No, not on here, well, and then my printer only prints in black and white. So, yeah, no, we have not, uh we did have columns, I did delete out a couple of the columns so that we could um. I could fit it on one page, but there are some that we have notes out there that they have already started work. Sure, and were you guys good with um when I sent you guys um about two weeks ago, three weeks ago now, the. Where everything is on the P drive. Um all the pictures um in, or yeah, we put it on the P drive. We just emailed it to, oh, just emailed it to, okay. So, but anyway, so we sent you guys an email with all of the group one nuisances that were sent out to Leisure Lake. Are you guys satisfied with that, or did you guys actually need a binder?
So, I don't know how many more updates you have, but we do have a schedule here to have a public hearing at ten, and we're a little past ten.
Let's do it.
We are scheduled to have a public hearing on proposed ordinance, three thirteen DHK Investment LLC rezoning. That would open the public hearing at this time. Is there any comments, concerns regarding this ordinance?
I've got no comments on it.
I have not received them. Have you received any objections or criticism or?
Or support?
Concerns?
None of the other.
Motion to close the public hearings.
I'll second that.
A motion of second to close a public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Right.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carried. Now we have discussion possible actions to waive the second and third public hearings on proposed.
I think we can't waive anything, I would, I would say we should go, we should approve the ordinance. And stuff, and then we can waive the second and third readings. This just seems backward to me, I talked about it last time, it's hard to waive action on something you haven't even approved yet. You know, for a way of a second or third reading.
Don't you normally have to have your second and third reading before you can approve it? For your public hearing.
You gotta, you gotta prove what you're reading, and then you gotta have the second and third reading. So, however you guys want to do it, but.
You know, unless we get legal counsel, this is how we've had done it, we should probably find out in going forward, because. We don't have on the agenda to approve the public.
Well, the the next one, discussion of possible motion approved or proposed ordinance, three thirteen DHK.
Okay, well, we can reverse them if you so like.
Uh I would make the motion that we approve the ordinance three thirteen DHK Investment LLC rezoning.
A motion of second to approve the proposed ordinance presented, all those in favor say aye.
That I would propose we waive the second, third, um.
Public hearing.
See, because that's a public hearing, that's where I'm saying. We need to waive the hearings before you can approve the ordinance.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to waive the second and third public hearing.
Is that a second?
Yep.
A motion of second to waive the second, third public hearing as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carried. And we have also a, we are using.
I guess where I'm getting confused in second, third public hearings, um ordinance. A resolution takes one reading, ordinance, I always thought took three readings to pass, that's where I'm getting. Isn't that true?
So we've actually had this discussion, it depends on who you talk to.
It's one public hearing, and you read an ordinance three times.
It depends on who you talk to as far as which way it should be done.
Are you asking to chime in back there, Kim?
That she have your public hearing before your first reading, with the zoning ordinance, usually your zoning or adjustment has a public hearing, and then it would go to the. Main board, which would be you, that you have your public hearing, you'd have your first reading, and then you have the option to waive your second and third readings.
So we're not waiving the second.
Readings.
That's what I'm saying, there's one public hearing in front of us.
Right, and I think I used to say that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we are in, in the realm anyway.
Somebody's realm.
Uh was there any other updates that you needed at this time?
Well, I did just want to add, the total cost right now for service of the abatement paid is up to a thousand fifty nine dollars and thirty nine cents. That's the, the third round, there's a couple that they didn't have to serve, well, there's a couple people we found out that were deceased and I. We, you know, stopped those papers, um another one had some things removed before the papers were served. Stopped those papers, so we were able to save a little bit of money there with those, um. One thing too, we're getting more emails and inquiries about wind energy. So I wanted to, we, I do have lists and and documents of different counties with their wind and wind energy. And I wanted to just see, do you guys want public input before we start developing our own? How restrictive do we want to be, do we want to make it super easy to work in our county, do we want to make it next to impossible to work in our county? Somewhere in between, and do we need?
Do a work session and see what other.
Well, I would like her to get more input is, and maybe come up with a, with a proposal, um again, I I would truly respect. Some information coming out of Delaware County, they've been dealing with this for a long time, and I know they rewrote theirs three times, I believe.
And you talked to the lady in Iowa City?
I'm through, yes, I have talked to her. And um with center for inner government, the center, okay, yeah, I've talked to.
I would think if we come up with something that we can review, and then have. Input, whether it be a work session, something we can do and write our questions on, um where we might go with it further.
Because it depends on what you want, there's actually a county out there in Iowa right now, and I was reading their uh a press release. On them yesterday, they basically sat there and told the wind energy people, our ordinance is so restrictive, you're not gonna be able to do anything.
Well, I don't necessarily want to do that, again, I might want some options to say, I want to see what's out there, see what's available. See what the revenue may do for me, uh I have very little information to say, no, I won't want nothing to do with you.
Okay.
I I have nothing to look at, I need some notes, or these are my questions.
You know, and then that, before we get something going, then maybe we do want to do a public hearing and get.
Public.
Citizens. Citizens inputs on it.
I think I would also be in favor of maybe putting a halt on any further evaluation or whatever, because. I personally don't like the fact that they came in and put up a tower and asked permission after the fact, they also did that in Clinton County, if you understood.
At the same time.
And so that proves to me it was an intentional and on purpose thing. And if that's their modus operandi, so to speak, I don't necessarily know how much I want to play, or I want to be very cautious when we do.
This is another company that's reaching out.
Well.
So there's other.
I I almost want to say no. Until we get our ducks in a row via an ordinance, talking to Delaware and all that kind of stuff. Because right now, I think a lot of these companies are trying to take advantage of the in, lack of preparation of each county.
Right.
And we can simply pass a res- resolution saying no further development until we get a resolution in order.
And that's one thing I was gonna ask, do you want to put a moratorium on any type of wind or solar at a um. Um, that large scale.
That would be something I would be, not that I, not that I'm anti-wind and solar, I just want to make sure we have our ducks in a row, something in place. So we don't fall into these cracks where they can just put up a tower and say, ah.
They should have had to have applied for a permit to begin with, correct?
Yes, sir.
So they are, that, that we do have in place, so we could.
Before it was us?
No, no.
So I guess that's what I'm saying, so if they already broke the, our ordinance or resolution, whatever it is. They, they're already in arrears on it, and maybe they expected that, I don't know.
That was the met town, I don't know that that's the case, but then again, we have a lot of property owners in our county that do the same. Not that it's right, because it's not right, and it causes a lot of problems for our department, anytime someone doesn't go through the proper steps. It takes so much longer to get things done.
I am not opposed to solar and wind.
Absolutely.
But I would like a moratorium with stiff penalty if they violate it until we get our bits in place that we can pursue.
Okay.
That's what I would like to see, it's up to you guys, but, you know.
Yeah, I'm not in, I'm just totally in favor of, you know, one, they knew they had to do it. It's not like you got. Maybe somebody, you know, I could, I can see where. I could, I can see where it happened and somebody's like, oh, I didn't realize I had to apply for that permit or whatever, you know. Again, that's some education, but they do this for a living. They, they know the proper channels to go through. Probably six months later after they've been caught. Is.
They, they weren't caught. They, they pushed us.
Right, but still, six months later. They go, oh, we didn't do this.
And that's just one company we're talking about. So there's others out there that are looking to develop wind in eastern Iowa.
So what repercussions when they do that? They did it without the permit that's up. Do we say tear it down?
No, we treat them like any other property owner in Jackson County. We asked them to go through the channels to get it right.
Absolutely.
And they didn't, and there was no, no foul, they got a postdated permit or whatever. I, that's the way I would like to proceed until we have an ordinance in place. I would like to see a moratorium stopping anything with a stiff penalty for proceeding outside.
And that's for wind turbines.
And solar.
Okay, and solar, okay. And I will get with John Keys and see what we need to do.
Procedure is to get that in place. We can't just jump to and say we need to, we can stop.
We can talk and see what John recommends how to go forward.
The only thing that makes me leery about that is they're still collecting their data, so that's then putting their company ahead of everybody else.
But that's a wind, that's a met tower. That would be different than a, than a turbine. We could still allow those if they went. My understanding is why wouldn't we allow a met, another met tower? That's just a met tower.
No, right, no actual turbine going up.
Right.
Well, the, I, I. That's encouraging other companies, well, you can just go put up a tower and ask for forgiveness.
But that's a met tower, not a, not a turbine. It's a study tower. Are we going to put a moratorium on met towers also?
Stop development, stop studies, because without our stuff in place. What I'm saying, because right now, they just came in and put the tower up and said, oh.
That was one company. But, I mean, are we going to punish all the companies for something that was inappropriately done by another?
And here's my thing, are you going to make them? You can't, how are you going to make them stop collecting?
So we still had the permit process. So if this company wants, another company wants to come in and put up a met tower. They go through the process, if you want to come then, then we stop it. If we, if we're going to issue them the permit to put up the met tower, we still issue them the permit. That's the way I look at it. If you want to stop it then, say, no, you can't.
Right, yeah. And you know, I know there's talk, it's like, well, why don't we make you tear it down and start over? Well, are we going to do that to every Jackson County taxpayer that is built illegally? Tear it down, then come talk to us and we're going to start over. So I just, I want to try to keep us above reproach that way. Um, I know they're not actually property owners in Jackson County, and I just hate to see treating them any different than we would somebody else that made a mistake.
I don't think they made a mistake. I think they did it on purpose. That's what I want to stop. They're taking advantage of our ignorance or lack of preparedness.
Yeah, and our ordinance was kind of um kind of weak because it didn't list that, and even though I lumped it under communications towers, because technically that's where communications tower. So, but I will get with John Keys, talk to him about a moratorium. And am I looking specifically for the solar and wind turbines? Be not necessarily met towers. Okay, all right, and so.
See if there's a way that if the tower's put up before the permitting issue, we can hear the sport, give us a significant funding for that. And I don't care which tower that is.
You're talking turbine or met tower?
So we don't have the.
Lack of permitting for.
If they want to put up a met tower, come do the permits. They put it up and then you can ask, it's going to.
So we're going to treat that different than a, than somebody that build a house where they weren't supposed to?
Or change your crack or. Just saying.
Yeah, and we have a lot of them out there, so.
You're not going to change, and if you're going to penalize them. Then you're going to have to do one and all.
I want to try to be consistent and kind of like what I'm trying to do at leisure lake.
Systems across Jackson County, not, but.
All right, consistence on every level, and that's hard, but I'm trying my best.
All right, appreciate it, lady. Have a good day. Next on together would be Jathan. Is it Chigwin? I, I wasn't going to totally blow it. Here was homebase Iowa program. Just going to give us some information. Yes.
A brief explanation? Yes, sir. I uh, was explaining, I'm just kidding. I heard that. It's fair to, you know me, saying brief is, is fair. I was explaining to Kelly earlier that I love being out and um, seeing how communities or the supervisors are handling. This is very exciting conversation. I think this is an easy win. I have yet to present to a board of supervisors that wasn't overwhelmingly supportive for the program. This is an older program. I just want to, my name's Jason Chiquin, I'm the program manager for H B I. This is Ryland. Um, who is our homebase Iowa uh, uh, program career planner at the local, he's based out of Davenport, so he came here just to kind of uh, provide some support. So basically, Homebase Iowa is a one-of-a-kind public-private partnership that connects uh, veterans and their families with resources and opportunities in Iowa. It's an older program that dates back to about twenty fourteen. Where we're at right now is we're working very hard to onboard the remaining counties that are not yet designated homebase Iowa, and so that's what I'm doing is going around. Um, the good news is, is that Jackson County has, I think, some really awesome opportunities. You have an awesome economic development. First thing Kelly Brown here that I think is willing to help uh, move us forward. My uh, I'll provide just a, a, a high-level overview of the program, but really my ask here today is to maybe follow up. One of the requirements is to provide a county uh, resolution. And we have examples of that, that that would be an ask for all of you to review the example of the resolution that we put that up. And just really, it's to say that you support the program. Um, there are really uh, five requirements um, for this program. Uh, county board of supervisor resolution, we need engagement from our businesses in the county. That acco- that's already been accomplished, so that requirement's done. We need to come up with an incentive package. Um, that one is, I think, really important. We're out there every day promoting to veterans and their families across, you know, across the nation. Hey, this is a great place to come work, live, and play. And so we just want to be able to provide those talking points. Hey, um, you know, Jackson County is a great place to work, live, and play. I mean, I have to say, coming through here this morning, it is a really beautiful area. And I think you guys have a lot to show. Um, the other requirement is that we place a homebase Iowa community signs. That's pretty easy to do, and that last requirement is that we do some sort of a dedication ceremony. Um, so those are just to kind of give you that. But homebase Iowa, really what we're doing is we're trying to help businesses meet that workforce need, right? There are a lot of businesses that are trying to find ways to attract. And that's really the impetus of this program. Um, we also partner with institutions of higher education. We have about twenty-nine of them right now, because higher education is often the first place that veterans reintegrate because of the G I bill. We want to find ways to retain those veterans. And then that third component to the program is the community support piece, and the reason I'm here today is really just to say, you know, we want to send a message that Jackson County is a great place to come work, live, and play. Um, there are a lot of opportunities right now for homebase, for, for businesses to develop pipelines for those that are transitioning out of the military. Things that don't really have a cost, things like D O B Skill Bridge. Um, we can talk a lot, depending on what questions you have. We can talk to a lot of those best practices. Um, but we're even providing pre-training for businesses. Uh, we partnered with an organization called Site Armor, so um, this is really kind of an, an easy way for the county to come on board and to say, yes, this is something that we support. But um, let me just stop and ask if there's any questions. I can go is I can be as detailed as you want, but uh, I want to just kind of check in and make sure that you have an understanding of what we're here for today.
So have you uh, as our, where is the affairs office been in contact? Have you?
Brianna missed the latter meeting because she was sick, otherwise, yes.
Well, I just want to make sure that you guys are on, onboard or on base here. I, I didn't ever, ever hear your, your office mention, so.
Yep, so everything we do when we are um standing up a community is we're always involving the Veterans Affairs Office. Obviously, they are a focal point to many transitioning veterans. They are access to state and federal benefits. It's a very important piece of it. And also, I think what's really important is some communities are doing a really good job. I'm sure that you guys can provide the amount of um, resources that are brought into the community through service-connected benefits, and that is money that usually is pumped into the economy here, so I think there's a really good uh, uh, part. Where we're at right now is we're just trying to move this forward, and it always starts with the county board supervisors to say, hey, this is something that we support. And then empowering um, Kelly and our, our V A office to kind of help do the work to make that happen. This shouldn't take a long time. We're actually onboarding for uh, other communities this.
So this designation basically is trying to help empower employers, employ veterans transitioning out of.
I think that's a big piece of it, the workforce, that we're trying to help uh, businesses find ways to uh, grow their workforce, absolutely. And veterans bring a lot of uh, you know, strength to that piece. The other piece obviously is we want veterans and spouses to know, hey, this is a great place to live as well. You'll find that there are some really good top-tier counties, I'd say, really close. Clinton County was probably one of our best counties that was able to really show the return on investment. One of the things that the state of Iowa does right now is a five thousand dollar home purchasing grant for veterans. The county came on some time ago, it's been many years now, and they did a fifteen hundred dollar grant that could be added on top of that. And just to give you an idea, they actually tracked that. So Clinton County tracked, and I think the last numbers I had, they had awarded like sixty-seven thousand dollars over the, the years that they had done this. And that accounted for about a hundred and eight thousand dollars increased tax revenue for the county every year. And it was about a total of five point five million dollars total home purchasing. So on that, Scott County came on board. They decided to do the same things. They did a fifteen hundred dollar uh, grant that could be added on to what the state does. But the city of Davenport did an additional grant, so that's actually had some really good success. Cedar County does something similar. I really like Rod, Rod Ness over, and he's with Economic Development. They actually recognized that their county was a little bit unique because they would have people that would come and live in the county, but they might work outside the county. So they broke their incentive up where if somebody comes to live in the county, they're still doing something because they recognize the economic impact of that. But if they work in it, then there's an additional uh, benefit there. So there are some examples right around Jackson County that we certainly couldn't look at. But really, again, the ask today is that we can follow up with um, Luann or the auditor, I'm not sure who would want it, and provide that example of a resolution. If that's something you guys could look at. And pretend, you know, and, and, and pass that, and then really just let us know who, who we should be working with. Um, you mentioned the V A office.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd like to see you work with all of you both. I mean, I'd like to see you work with the V A, Kelly, Lisa, you know, Luann, and include. I mean, of course, our county attorney too, so I mean, I, I would again, take legal advice and counsel, if you will. You know, to make sure we're on the right track. I don't see it. You know, if, if there's a, if there's a red flag here, somebody tell me what it is, but I, I don't see one or hear one. Um, you know, so I mean, I, I see benefits.
Yeah, we'll just need somebody that can serve as that point person that will, as we meet these requirements, can submit that information through our, through our program so that we can then say everything's been accomplished, then we're ready to go. So, perfect.
I, I would, I would venture to say, Kelly, you've been working with them, but you want to be that contact point as far as bringing it, putting it together, or how, how do you want to do?
However, you, I'm, I'm sorry, yes, I volunteer.
Think what we find sometimes is there are people that want to make this happen, but they're not sure that they can kind of act on, you know, kind of be obviously, you guys will see what we're doing, but I think your direction to say, yes, we can kind of.
Just, just so I'm saying that everybody's involved here, yeah. I just want everybody on the same page.
Brianna, her new position, but maybe if you can give it to Kelly and what needs to be floated through or whatever.
That's perfect, yeah. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say, since I had Ryland here, um, uh, we have now reorganized, there's a one pager in there that kind of talks a little bit more broadly. Homebase Iowa used to fall under I E D A and I W D, it now falls under I W D. What that means is that we are, it's, I know complicated, say government, right? But what that really means is that we've actually organized under a division of veteran workforce services. And we have our program, but we also have all those that serve veterans as kind of under the same umbrella. And just to give you an example, so you know what the return on investment is, since we hired five H B I career planners in January twenty twenty-two. We've now placed, I think, um, over three hundred and fifty-two veterans and spouses with to help them find meaningful employment. Those are just those individuals that have touched like Ryland and his colleagues, but we're, we're doing a lot more than that as well. So it's very exciting, but I appreciate the time.
I am, I'm very curious and uh, interested in seeing the package, or you know, whatever, how it can be.
All right.
Can benefit the county, of course, and, and individuals, of course, so.
Perfect.
Okay, we sure appreciate what the veterans have done and their time served and um, willing to proceed.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, I will work with uh, Brianna, correct, and, and Kelly, and we'll make this happen, and Ryland will be part of that too.
All right. Thank you, Jason, all right. Have a good day. All right, next on our agenda here.
How you doing?
Is Tony Pickles and Brianna.
Good morning.
Good morning. Beautiful day.
So we're due for uh, our department update. Uh, you know, there's some changes going on. I'll be done on the thirty-first. And Brianna will take over on June first. Everything I think is going to be smooth. It's not a, not a big deal. But what did come out this past week was the G D X yearly compare yearly report from um, Veterans Affairs. And what this shows in millions of dollars is what we're bringing into the county as a as that what veterans are bringing back into the county. So in a whole compensation, pension, and healthcare. Veterans are receiving about thirteen point nine million dollars uh, in, in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. It's up one point two million dollars from the previous year. And that's healthcare and compensation. But if you look at just compensation and pension. We really up that in fiscal year twenty-two, one point six million dollars. It's coming back in indirect funds to veterans in Jackson County. We're down a little in healthcare, and actually Debbie and I were discussing this. I think it's because COVID, the COVID years were up with healthcare. A lot more veterans are maybe using healthcare during COVID. Uh, but the one thing, and it really falls into what Jathan was, was saying, is in the last five years, we've lost in veteran population in Jackson County about two hundred and fourteen veterans. And, and that's, you know, we have aging veterans in, in Jackson County. Uh, where homebase Iowa would be huge is if we can get those young veteran families back into the community, because it's going to bring more funds, you know. Brianna and Debbie, they've done a great job of helping veterans and getting compensation back into the county, but we're losing veterans and we can't maintain that. Get those numbers going up all the time. If we have more veterans uh, passing away, then we can actually, you know, help out, so. Something like homebase Iowa that could attract young veterans back into Jackson County would be great.
Well, obviously, your numbers are, are probably going to continue somewhat that way with the loss of World War Two veterans, which there was many, many veterans, you know, and Vietnam too, for the length of time, and the amount of service that was given, you know, by, by many, many individuals. Um, obviously, I think we're gonna, we're gonna lose some numbers, but uh.
Well, we've been going up for the last five years.
I like to think that's a, 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 that the program that you're presenting to them or helping them, that you're outreach to them and getting them to come in. I'd like to think that's a part of.
Good service going on, so.
But rather than that, I think things are going well today. But rather than that, I think things are going well today.
We uh, posted the position that I'm in now, so that's. Other than that.
Yeah, I see that position as quite good, I mean, wish you the best. And wish you the best too, and thank you for your time.
You bet.
And uh, we appreciate it and uh, your dedication to it and time served and everything you've done for us.
Alright.
We expect all good. Good luck, have a good day. Good to meet you, the officer, something.
Yes. Okay.
Alright, moving right along. We'll be joined by uh, Jack Willie and Lynn, are you waiting for Ja- uh, Lynn?
Lynn is not going to be able to come.
Okay, well, then we won't wait.
She has another commitment.
Well, good morning, good to see you again.
Just a little information yet. Well, I had quite a meeting yesterday, and I know that uh, Nan was on it, uh.
Once I accepted it for a while, but I think she forgets to look.
When, when you came on for the rest of the meeting, on the screen, it said Nan Lego Jackson, or Jack. And then dot, 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 and I, and I said, well, we know Nan is here. Um, uh, actually, the first time, the first thing we always do at every meeting is the finances and um. Uh, right now, we're setting with nine, nine million fifteen hundred and three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighteen cents. Um, we have two thousand seven, two million seven hundred and forty-two dollars and eight, forty. Forty-two thousand eight hundred, I'm not used to these big numbers. Eight hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty cents, and then numbers, um, which the state allowed us to hold over. So we can use that to pay contracts that we established this year, but haven't started yet. So they've allowed that, um, we're waiting for the draft audit, it will be available in July or August, um. There's still one county that haven't gotten their figures into us so that the auditor can proceed, so we're still waiting for that county. Um, there's a pro- approximately one point two five million in claims that are. Uh, doable, are, are doable, and these bills will come in after the beginning of the fiscal year and um. We have until October to go back and make sure that they're in this fiscal year, um, contract. Um, the report will include data on services and the number of individuals that are being served. Also, they will deal with performance measures and deliverables, there will also be an evaluation of our current services. Um, review data for a mobile crisis response, crisis stabilization, residential services and twenty-three hour observation and holding services. Looking at statewide outcomes and goals, we will submit. An annual report and point out areas where we might differ from the state goals. Gary M T V A was there also, and um, he said that they had um, so far put up two billboards about the crisis services. And he said one was in Makoka, and I asked him after. I, I said to Lynn, I said, um, do you know where it's at? Cause I have not seen it. And she said, I have no idea where it's at, so I asked Gary, I says, where is the sign in Makoka, and he says, well, I'll have to get back to you on that. So before I came this morning, I took a drive, I went out by um, the. The line kilns, cause I knew there's a couple of billboards there, then I went up and. I thought there was some coming in from the, from the west or the east, and I thought, okay, wasn't any there. So then I drove out and went to New Bypass, and about where Happy Joe's was, there is a crisis service billboard. So that's where it's at, and so um, he talked about um, quite a few things um, during our meeting. And um, they created a family crisis video, which was really amazing. And it was a group of children that they were talking to, and um, it's funny, could you see that?
I could, no, because the way their pictures are, they're big pictures. Or uh, I don't know what her name is.
Lori?
Lori, yeah.
Okay, yeah, but it was funny, the gal that was.
What they're presenting is the little banner across the top, so you really can't see their screen.
Well, the gal that was teaching the class was one of the teachers in the school system, and they didn't say what school system it was. But she was extremely pregnant, and so he told us afterwards, she had the baby the next day. Baby, and um, the video was, I thought was excellent, and all of the boards of supervisors from our five counties. Are going to receive a copy of that, and there's another one that they're going to receive a copy of, and that's the Gray Lives Matter. And that's the program for college-age kids and high school-age kids. And um, they have a group from Saint Ambrose College that are working diligently with them. And I've seen one of their ads on TV where they had the students talking about gray lives matter, and that's basically. Trying to get kids to understand that if they need help, there's help out there, and it's also on suicide prevention. So um, and the big discussion was Gary M T V A's book. Dragons Flight School, and um, uh, every child in the five county area will receive a copy of this book. And they're also going to give the counties some of them, so that. I asked if they were giving them to Head Start, if they were giving to preschools, if they were giving them to um. Non-public schools, and they said every child will have an opportunity to receive this, they're also going to put it in doctors' offices. And at the libraries, so that if kids are missed, they'll get to see it. I'll leave this one here, I have a copy of it at home that Lynn had gotten for me early. But it's, it's, it's kinda cute, and everybody, everybody likes dragons, and of course, they said, um, Gary M T V A said when. Somebody goes and gives a program, they're gonna try and get a dragon outfit, so they'll have to wear them, they give the program.
So you're just gonna scare everybody, that way.
Of course, Jim Erwin was sitting by me, and he says, well, make sure it can fit Jack. You don't need to make sure it will fit me, um, I don't really.
So you volunteered for that?
No, I'm not volunteered for that, um, and then uh, Challenge for Change, uh, that's. Another program, creating a, a work actual, they're gonna also create a workbook for the kids and a coloring book. And um, those are going to be in the future, so that then, then tie this book in with some other activities for kids. Trauma Society has created and keyed, um, and that's keyed for South Morris High School. And it's basically trying to also tell them that there is help, and if they have any questions. Give them contact people that they can communicate with, and then we spent the last part of the meeting. Um, discussing House File four seventy-one. And four seventy-one um, deals with youth beds, and it also deals with um. The regions, and you'll see in your, in your pass out, that the state Department of Human Services, now. July first will be Department of Health and Human Services, they're trying to create, they kind, kind. Kind of hired somebody to come in, they're tired of all the different maps for all of the different. Organizations and groups, they wanna come up with a map that will be one map, and it'll cover the entire state. And Lori said that we should be able to remain as we are in size. Because of the number of people, we have over one thousand, and um, uh. But it also included uh, additional members of the governing board. Right now, the governing board consists of the five supervisors or supervisor rep. And um, there is one for education, and there is another individual that is a. A, a parent of a child, and another one is a provider of services, so there's eight at the present time. That are on the board, only the board of supervisors at the present time can vote on any issues. The new rules will govern, there will be twelve members to the board, and all twelve will have a vote. It will not just be, when we first started, it was created so that the supervisors, at that time, we were contributing money. And so they felt it was only fair that the board members on the governing board would be the ones that would vote to spend the money.
So what determined the twelve members, Jack?
Well, it would be the supervisors, and there would be the um. A member from education, a member from uh, a parent, and a member from uh. Somebody receiving services as a new one, law enforcement is a new one. Somebody from the judicial system is new, and then there'll be an at-large.
Okay, I, I'm just wondering why they even number, so we don't have a quorum somehow, but.
Well, we, we have, we have, we have to wait sometimes for our, for our meetings, so.
The, the, the bylaws or whatever say that your quorum consists of, or your members present consist of a quorum, right, so if you have, yeah.
With the eight, we have to have five there in person. Which I've always felt it was a little strange, because on the Department of Human Service Council that I'm on, um. No one is there in person, everybody is zooming in for that meeting, and I, I keep wondering, why is. That, that our mental health region has to have people there in person, when a state committee doesn't have to. I thought that was rather strange.
Quite a time consuming gonna drive for a lot of the members, I would think, yeah, so.
Um. Oh, and the supervisors can represent only forty-nine percent of the board. The.
Five out of, five out of twelve, I guess, is less than half.
Yeah, so, that was, that was our main discussion.
But does that work for your quorum, then?
I would think the members that are present. The majority of the members that are present would be a quorum, but I don't know how it's, how it's designed.
Well, you have to have one more than half.
But I'm saying, for your, if, if your, say, your majority of, all of your supervisors were there.
That would not be the quorum.
Right, but if you only had a few of these other people, would that qualify under that whole forty-nine?
It depends how it was set up.
Well, it's just that the makeup of the board, you can't have more than forty-nine percent. And she said with our five representatives, that's less than the forty-nine percent.
So basically, if it's, if it's one more than half, it would be set, it would be either seven or. The majority of the ones that are present, it depends on, so.
And all of that will be rewritten.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
It'll come to you for, for your approval, um, so uh. But it was, it was a lengthy meeting, and, and Nan was probably there when we discussed the Robert Young Center. And there are some issues that we're going to be dealing with, with the Robert Young Center, and I, I, I and Lynn will keep you abreast as to what's going on. Um, cause there, there's definitely some things that need to, to change, and um. We need to get that done before the end of this contract with them.
Well, good, appreciate the info, I got a couple of questions against Jack, you know, we had a de-cap meeting on Friday. And of course, you know that the, the mental health uh, has taken over the step-in program, so I don't know if there's any reports. Or any updates on that, how that's working out, I thought you worked very good for the de-cap board, but.
Uh, that was not discussed at all.
Okay, and I know they have just taken it over, going to take it over, I guess, is, is the first of July or whatever, I'm not sure, but. Maybe they have taken it over, right, so. Well, that was a large part of the de-cap budget, was that program, now, and I was just wondering if it's gonna continue to. Uh, I mean, it really helped the juvenile population in our area, um. So I just, I'd like to see that continue or have a report or see what comes out of that, the only other, um. Frank has got some real nice ones, if you want, he, he, he donates them as needed.
The step program.
Yeah, step in program, yeah. And also, I don't know if that program would implemented to that, uh, the mental health service or not, but it was a program where they were. Sending like text messages, automatically text messages to individuals that were either recognized or just in general. To the school population in the morning, just a positive note, um, if it will be, uh, and I thought that was, maybe that was coming from the de-cap more to it.
Yeah.
That was a real positive to, to the school system, I mean, like, just in the morning, oh, that's gonna be, it's a great day, or you know, and it's gonna be a great day, and you know, it's just like. It was a positive start to their day, you know.
Well, I think that's kind of some of the same things that Challenge for Change does, cause that's with the, with the school system, so.
Yeah.
Um, but I'll check on that.
Yeah, I'm sure that program.
Lynn might know, if she was here, she.
I'm sure that message system was through the de-cap board, but I, I know that they have taken over the, the step-in program, so. Appreciate it, yeah, any questions for Jack? Any questions for us, Jack, or input or comments?
That I can think of.
Criticism? Criticism?
Don't, I do not criticize you at all, um, I just know that, um. I had received word that I was appointed to the Human Service Council, and now, um, I had to resubmit. An application um, for the Health and Human Service Council, and we will not know. Who, uh, the governor is appointing till probably sometime in June, and they'll take office, or they'll take. The, our last meeting as the current board will be in June, and then the new board, whoever the governor appoints will start in July. And um, I'm, I'm not sure whether I will be appointed, because they have certain criteria you have to fit within. Um, because of the Department of Health, they'll have doctors and nurses and. Uh, a lot of different people that we haven't worked with before, we've had two joint meetings with them so far, just to. Kind of familiarize ourselves with how they do business, and they've had some of their representatives. Uh, attend our meeting by Zoom, so they see how we do business, so we'll just have to wait and see, um, and. Uh, I was disappointed, the secretary for our human services has resigned. And she moved, she'll be the coordinator of services for uh, the immigrants that are coming into Iowa. So she can have a, 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 a big job, yeah, she will, they certainly will.
Yeah, I mean, we hear about it every day, and, well, I certainly hope they check your qualification, years of service and uh. And what you've done in the past, that, for that, we're all involved, all of you, so.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you volunteering.
Leave this book with Luann, you can look at it, and they, they did say that every, every county in the region was going to get. A, a box of books, so, and then you can do with them as you.
I'm sure they'll show up.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Jack, have a good day.
You also.
Alright, I believe we're reporting on boards and commissions already, unless somebody has something else they'd like to share.
Won't you move, adjourn?
Hold a second, uh.
It's a remote, and the secretary, here in all of the favors, say aye. Aye, opposed, aye, want to carry?